Welcome to B County Commissioners Court. This is Notice of Regular Term Meeting. It is nine AM, Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with B County Courthouse, Commissioner's Court, Route number one ten, one oh five West Park Street, Christie Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. This is your official caller, Howard. We have Father Andrew Green, which today is his birthday also, but he is our designated pastor, so sir, if you will lead us in prayer.
Lord God Almighty, in whose name the founders of this country won liberty for themselves and for us, and let the torch of freedom burn nations then unborn. Grant that we and all people of this land may have grace to maintain our liberties and righteousness and peace. Lord, we pray for those who have been devastated by recent flooding in central Texas. We remember those who have lost their lives so suddenly. We hold in our hearts the families forever changed by grief and loss. Bring them the consolation, bring them your consolation and comfort. We ask your blessing on those who have lost homes, security, and hope. Bless the work of those who are providing relief and assistance, and may their work be guided by your grace. And help us to know how to respond with generosity and prayer, assistance, and aid to the best of our abilities. And Lord, be with our commissioners this morning as they do the work set before them. Bless our country and our county, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to place?
Please, please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas plate.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, and welcome again. This is a time to recognize visitors. This isn't a time to, to speak, that was kind of our public comment, but if anybody is out there who wants to be recognized, this is your chance to say, hey, I'm so-and-so, and we will recognize them. Anyone? We'll move right along. We have Commissioners Court opening remarks. Chris, for this, will you lead us off, sir?
Yes, sir. The past couple of weeks, we've been busy with the Salary Committee, and then after this meeting, we have another meeting right behind it for the recommendations that we've been working on, and it's taken quite a few hours to put that together, so we'll have some little delay after that. I did have a couple of calls that I got Roden Bridge to take care of. One was called Grass on four oh two, but everybody, if somebody's listening out there, with the recent rains that we've had, and you're having some grass issues at your, where your intersections are, please bear with us. Roden Bridge has a big list, and they're trying to comply with everybody's wishes, okay? So just bear with the, with the department. They're, they're stretched out pretty thin, so, uh, I'll, Roger wanted to make that comment there. Also had a meeting with the B Development Authority to discuss a new project that's coming up out there, and that one's still under, uh, our attorneys advise us not to say anything about that one yet, but we will have the B Development Authority, Mr. Michael Blair, we'll have him up here in a couple of weeks so he can explain what's going on out there and everybody can catch up. Got with the Maintenance Department on replacing, uh, one UAC at the top of the Justice Building, and they have put a fix on another one, uh, so we're trying to replace all the older units going out, and, uh, the Maintenance Department is doing a pretty fair, very, very good job on that. Got a new culvert on Car Road, did a, a new, uh, person moving into B County, and Roden Bridge got that one. And I also attended the ribbon cutting at the Swan, um, Hospital for the new robotics equipment that was there. Pretty interesting equipment that they got going on there. So with that, Commissioner, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Leto.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Leto, sir. Good morning. Um, actually, it's pretty quiet a couple of weeks. Had a couple of calls from constituents on, uh, road issues, monks, I had one culvert call. And, uh, I attended the LEPC meeting this past week, and, um, gosh, what else? It was, it was pretty, pretty bleak this, this past two weeks, uh, which is okay every once in a while. Uh, is that all that's left?
Uh, thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. I also attended the LEPC meeting and the ribbon cutting, and that, if you haven't seen the robotics that are out there, if you go back and remember the old science fiction movies that you saw where they had someone strapped in a chair, and this big piece of equipment had all these things pointing down at them, needles and all that kind of stuff, that's what it is. But it's okay. There's a technician over here that's kind of guiding everything, and they told us that their first surgery is going to be a gallbladder surgery the next Monday after we were there. So everyone that I've talked to that's had surgery with one of those machines, wasn't necessarily here in Beville, everywhere else, it's been fantastic. Less chance of infection, less chance of somebody sneezing when they got their scalpel fixed to go in, so it's good, it's a good thing. My son had to have some surgery recently he hadn't done. The recovery time is a lot less, so we're very, very lucky to have him. They told us at the meeting that, the unveiling, that Alice wanted it, and they said, no, it's going to Beville. We have new surgeons in Beville, we want the new equipment to go to Beville, so we were lucky to get it here, and we, we really appreciate that. So if you have to go into surgery, and it's robotic surgery, look forward to it. I think it's a good thing. Couple other things, I'll, I'll cut to the chase here. We all know that the bus stop in Mineral was damaged, uh, that was about four months ago. We've gone through the process with the insurance company. We had a company that was going to rebuild it, and they couldn't get together the insurance. Our Auditor's Office has gone out, and this grant has gone out and gotten prices to rebuild it. We do have a, a price that was in our, our range, is close enough for government work. We have an anonymous donor who's going to make up the difference between the price and what the county has in the, the bank from the insurance company, so it should be rebuilt in time for school. So that's a good thing. So we'll, we'll move right along with that. Sorry? Okay. Uh, also, it's going to come up later in the, the court, but I wanted to expand a little bit now. Speed limit signs. If you've been to Mathis Lake from Skidmore, when you go through Tynan, if you haven't noticed the red border around the speed limit sign, the next time you go, look at it. It catches your attention. Uh, there's a problem in certain areas with speed, and you can write tickets, you can go, all this kind of stuff, but if one little thing like that catches somebody's attention and has them slow down, that's a good thing. We have to credit Commissioner Oliveras for the ones in Tynan. We have a little speed problem down there, and I've done it too. We all have. Tynan is just a blink in the, in the pan as you go through. He got with the Highway Department, said, is there anything y'all can do to help us? And they said, yeah, let's try these signs with the red border. And, and next time you go, look. I also understand there's some near Berkeley now, and there's some north of us in Orange County. Where I'm going with this, we have a, uh, two roads in B County, White Lane and Bronco Lane, that have a lot of traffic. There's a major church there. There's anywhere from fifty to seventy-five vehicles twice a week that go up and down those roads. Uh, good folks, don't get me wrong, but we need to emphasize the speed, because right now, we have our speed limit signs on the first of the road and the end of the road. We're going to ask Roden Bridge not only to order the signs with the red borders, but to put additional signs in the middle of the road. Those two lanes are very, very narrow, and the people living there have, have contacted me and have contacted other Commissioners, said, is there anything y'all can do? This is our, our solution to try to help. Right now, and we've already done Bronco Lane, we reduced, we, we added speed limit signs there at twenty-five miles an hour. That's already in place. If our agenda item passes, we'll be replacing those twenty-five mile an hour signs with the one with the red border. White Lane is on the agenda for a public hearing. Once it's approved, we'll go back and do the same thing. And we'll probably give Roden Bridge the authority, if there are other areas in the county where we really have a problem, we can't solve it any other way. Let's try this. This is simple. It might just be enough to, to, uh, make people realize that, hey, it's twenty-five miles an hour. Because if it really does catch your attention, you're used to seeing these black and white speed limit signs, but here's one with a red border, and it makes a difference. So with that, no, gentlemen, uh, you have something you want to add?
Please. Yes, sir. Uh, Chief Deputy, I wanted to thank you and the Sheriff for, uh, doing the hot dogs and hamburgers for the employees Thursday before last. That was a nice gesture, and well appreciated. Thank you.
They worked.
They worked. Yes, we worked. Anytime you eat your food, you've got three Commissioners that'll show up. So we were there, and y'all did a great job. I understand you were the main cook.
I slaved over the hot grilling.
So you did a good job, but, uh, it was great.
I'll bring you a napkin, I'll bring you an upcase.
I got it.
Good job, sir. Good job, Commissioner.
Thank you, though.
Okay, we're moving into our public comment section. Uh, I understand, Ryan Ramirez, you have a student here that would like to talk to the court?
Yes, absolutely.
Riley, Riley Latham?
Riley Latham, correct.
Yes, please, y'all are on, on cue right now.
Very well.
Do y'all want to go to podium, or y'all?
Uh, we're fine here.
So we can't hear. You can't hear. You want to up there?
Yeah, she said.
Well, I heard they get you up your voices so they can hear.
We, we need to keep this lady happy.
Very well. I was here recently to provide an update on the rural, um, healthcare initiative with, between B County and the, um, hospital and Texas A&amp;M Medical School. So I gave an update on that the program has been expanding across the state, and we're very proud that the first, um, program was here in B County. So as they're developing other relationships across the state, they continue to use B County as the model. So we need to be proud of that, and not forget that. That's why I mentioned it again, too. So this morning, um, I'm here to introduce another intern, and Commissioner Dewitt mentioned her name, Riley Latham. Um, she has an impressive, uh, CV, you know, with all the honors and awards, um, work experience, and research publication. And as I was going through this long list, you know, um, something caught my eye was that she's also gone to Peru on a medical mission trip. And, um, that, you know, those mission trips provide free medical care. My nephew, Dr., um, Chris Franzen, just returned recently, and they provided ninety surgeries in a week, and, um, he's a penceentheologist. So I just think that the work that they do is just, you know, it's really, um, a service of, you know, for self, you know? The rotary, you know, model. So, um, I'm going to let, um, Riley, um, say a few words, and, you know, she too has experience with the robot at the hospital. So I think that's really interesting, and you'll get to hear firsthand from someone who's in the room while surgery is being conducted. Okay, so Riley?
Thank you. Thank y'all for, um, having me here for two weeks. Um, I've been here for one week, so Friday will be my last day. I'm going to go into the hospital here. I'm originally from Lufkin, Texas, and then for undergrad, I stayed in the East Texas area and went to Stephen F. Austin and got a degree in biology there. Um, I really enjoyed it, um, and eventually, um, during the time I was graduating, I was very blessed to have a few choices as to where I was going to continue my education for medical school, and ultimately, I decided that A&amp;M was the best fit for me, because they offer a unique aspect of their curriculum is that they have an option to do an emphasis in rural medicine through what's called the Rural Medicine Distinction. So that was ultimately my deciding factor and why I chose to go to medical school at A&amp;M. And now being a third year, finally, in the part of my education where I get to do that, and I was very excited to come here for my first rural rotation. I've had a few friends that have been through Beville in the past year, and they have wonderful things to say about the physicians that were teaching them, and how hospitable everyone has been, which I can now attest to as well. Um, I don't know if y'all have been told, but now at A&amp;M, rural rotations are going to be mandatory for years moving forward, so I'm sure y'all will be meeting a lot more medical students like myself, and, um, I just want to thank you again for all your hospitality and for the welcome that I've had here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you being here. Good luck in your career.
Thank you.
I think the shower, you have a public comment, Ben?
Yes, please. Hello? How are y'all today?
We're good. How are you?
Good. Um, I just wanted to come up here and kind of, um, a few things that are going on in the office these next couple of weeks. I'm hosting a canning with kids workshop, um, and I have a very, it's fifteen dollars per kid, but I had a very generous donor, um, say that she would sponsor three kids, so if you know anyone that would like to do it, I'm going to put these right here. Um, and then, actually, I'll use them to talk about real fast. Um, anyway, at the canning with kids workshop, I've hosted a couple of these over the past years, but mostly with adults. We learned about knife skills, preservation, and, um, just canning, everyday things that we have in the kitchen. And then, um, my forty-one buyers club, our forty-one buyers club is hosting their annual fundraiser, and if you've heard me talk about this before, forty-one buyers club is a buyers group that, um, gives to kids for the B County Junior Wife Sock Info Maker Show. Our goal is to raise the floor. We know that a lot of these projects that kids run through the sale ring and even show, um, cost way more than a thousand dollars to raise and build for the entire year. Uh, for example, my son has two Sears right now in the barn, and feed for the month alone is probably half of a thousand dollars, so imagine people with more than one child, and they're, they're trying to do this and make it work, but we love to do it. It teaches the children so much responsibility, um, and the kids love to do it as well. So we have a ton of really, really great buyers, and the community really supports this, but, um, buyers club like this and other ones make things possible. So this year, it's going to be at the Twisted Ranch, which is out on fifty-nine, Don Butler's place. It is going to be an old school dinner and dance. We've had requests for that before, so, um, no piano guys, unfortunately, this year, or bingo, but, um, dinner and dance, and we hope that you can attend. I have the flyer for y'all. Uh, we're selling individual tickets and, um, or tables, so if you know anyone that would be interested in coming, like I said, we don't keep any of the money, everything goes back to the kids. Um, so yeah, that's it. And then I brought all of you some jars from my last game, class, canning jalapenos, so y'all can try them and maybe come to the next class.
All right.
And I did make sure they're sealed, so you won't get sick. That's it for y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Yar. I always appreciate it. Cry, breathe, and we accept that. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? This is your chance, and we'll pick some move in the regular agenda. Nobody else. If you have other things you need to go do, by all means, please, you're not going to hurt our feelings if you leave.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, Patty Criss. Happy birthday. Thank you.
Number seven, the following items are under administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by Commissioner or county judge.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to second. We need further discussion.
No, unless there are any questions.
All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number eight, approved interlocal participation agreement between B County and Texas Association of County Health and Employer Benefits Pool. This is pretty much, uh, stuff that we've gone over with the court before. I think it's, uh, in front of you. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have motion and second. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just over here answering questions, you mean.
Okay. Are you satisfied with, uh, with everything this year? I know everything went up a little bit, and the employee's going to have to pay a little bit more, but, uh, we're able to still offer the employee their personal insurance a hundred percent.
And the only thing changed in here is we had, uh, our Cobra being handled by Blue Cross at the time, but now Tac's taking that over, uh, and that's in there. But that was another gen that we discussed, that another time, we'll be all gentlemen, and we all approve that already, we'll just hand it on to you.
Right now, correct, we're not with Blue Cross or anything in the world.
Well, we started their insurance.
We still have the insurance.
But the Cobra administration, they're no longer doing it.
Okay, it's Tac.
And it's just something that's so tedious that it would be in the best interest of the county to allow Tac to take over that, rather than we try to deal with it due to all the liabilities that are involved with timing and everything.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do you have further discussion, gentlemen? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, approved expo request for Rena P. Waver for, from Quest Loya for youth rodeo event on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
General, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Just go ahead and you need to.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a little rundown on what's, uh,
Okay, follow me, please.
What our little goal and mission is for all this. I just, uh, want to bring a lot more youth rodeo back to Beville. It's been a little while. We do have some occasionally, but I want it to be the way it used to constantly, almost every weekend. This is our mission statement. Uh, we're a nonprofit group. Uh, hopefully, we can grow bigger in the next few years, maybe even the next year, hopefully. Everything that the sponsors do give us, and, uh, it goes straight back to their awards. Uh, if we did have to pay any revenue, which we don't really need for that, by the way. Uh, like I said, we're nonprofit, and that's really what our goal is, is to keep the cowboy culture alive, um, show a positive, uh, image of sportsman, sportsmanship like Honda and all that good stuff for the kids, you know? Give them a platform to grow and show their skills, and, because there's not a lot in the area, everybody always has to travel far, hour, two hours, so it's, hopefully, it's a good thing that it's close here local. I know there's a lot of different rodeos that you have to travel and stuff like that, so that's our mission statement. I do have another paper, if you guys see that one. This is the flyer, if you guys want to attend. That'd be awesome. You guys out there. And this is just a, this isn't anything that means to you guys, it's just a sponsorship proposal packet, but it kind of gives a rundown of what we're doing, the events, and where the sponsorship money is going with all the sponsors. We have a lot of people behind us, and Beville, a lot of, uh, local businesses, so it's a really good thing. And that's pretty much it. That just gives you all the info on what we're doing and what our goal is for the, the agriculture community in Beville. Thank you.
Thank you for doing with the kids.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Number ten, approve the revision of the agenda item. Submission data issued to fines with House Bill number fifteen twenty-two effective September one, twenty twenty-five. Who's the agenda item?
Candy.
Judge's office.
Okay. What this is basically, from what I understand, the legislature has determined that, uh, there need to be more days for, uh, notification of public of a public meeting, and this does that, it increases it, uh, instead of having to have our agenda item on Wednesday, we have to have it on Monday before then, so it just increases it to make it, uh, easier for the public to know we're going to have public meetings.
Friday. She told me Friday. She, it's three business days, so for her, and time for her to do the agenda, she needs them by Friday. She may have changed it, but she looked at it again.
What we have right here is it, got to be deadline is on Monday at twelve PM, and then it posts on Wednesday at nine AM for the following week.
And this goes in September, so we'll have a little time to get used to it.
Right. So if anybody out there has agenda items that are used to coming in on Wednesday, it's too late, then you got to wait two more weeks to put them on, so get them in as soon as possible, and then that way we can, you can all get adjusted to the new schedule.
Absolutely. We have motion and second.
Thinking motion to approve.
Second. Have motion and second. Any further discussion? All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passionate, thank you, gentlemen. This is legislative required, so we will get it done ASAP. Number eleven, approve Beville Main Street request for permission to use courthouse grounds, parking lot, and electrical outlets for national night out on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five. I think we have Main Street here.
Good morning.
Dead by yourself to the court.
I am Melissa Sanchez, Main Street Director for City of Beville. I am here today to talk about national night out. It'll be, I think, fourth year that I've, uh, hosted this, uh, along with the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and- Department, Fire Department, and Emergency Management Room in the AMS. So I'm asking permission to use the courthouse grounds, adjacent parking lots, and electricity for Tuesday, October 7, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. We usually have games, activities, free hot dogs and pizza for the kids, so everything's free. And this year, we wanna add Touch a Truck to the event to give the kids with extra activity to do. So if you have any cool trucks that you'd like to bring out from maybe Rosenbridge or any other departments, let me know, and we can coordinate that. I'd love to have them out here, and as many as y'all have as possible.
So tell us about Touch a Truck. You bring it out to touch it?
Uh, yeah. It's a, yes, it's an interactive activity where kids can go see and explore vehicles like fire tricks, police cars, utility vehicles, and they meet the first responders and professionals, and they get to learn about that vehicle or the vehicles there.
Yeah, that would be a great place for a D O C.
Yeah, emergency management truck. That's about the only thing that we have that'd be interesting.
It really would, because it's got everything. We can make sure that
Like I mentioned before, court, I don't know how we can get it out there, but a lot of people will call us up, hey, what's going on at the courthouse? They're not getting the word, and they're not, I guess, not everybody has Facebook, or not everybody has anything. We gotta do something a little bit different to reach everybody, or try to reach everybody.
Yes.
I don't know whether you can do PSAs with
With the radio stations.
Radio stations. But yeah, not everybody, I get phone calls, hey, what are y'all doing? I don't know, I didn't see it, I didn't get an email, or I didn't get, I didn't get. So just to try to get the word out there a little bit better, that would be more participation.
Yeah, as soon as I have the flyer, I'll email it to all of y'all.
There you go, we can share it.
Share it. Hand deliver, and things like that, so.
If you would add Ryan Garza to your email list?
Oh, yes, yes.
And touch base with him about their vehicle, because that one, in my mind, and I think Commissioner's mind, just jumps out, says this is the one?
About the only one we have. We have a lot more.
A lot more.
No, the ULC one's really
I'll talk to Mr. Garza.
Yeah, please.
Yes. Do you have any questions for me, though, or would that be you?
I think we've all participated in it, and we've all been there, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Sanchez.
Thank you.
And I think we've already approved. Did you have a third to say, correct? Okay, that we have.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you again, Ms. Sanchez. Number 12, approved utilization of red border on selected county roads, field and signs for safety emphasis. Let me, before we vote on that, let me go back to what we were saying about the red borders, going where Madison's in, the White Lane and Bronco Lane traffic situation, so I'll make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are there any additional votes?
Yes, thank you. Some thoughts that I have, we might make this part of the motion, that Road and Bridge get those up ASAP.
We have to order?
I'm sorry?
We have to order, we have to meet.
Go ahead, as part of this motion, get them ordered, get them made, get them up. And on those two particular roads, part of the motion is to put the signs not only on the ends, but in the middle. Because I drove Bronco Lane the other day as a distance citizen. You see the sign going in, but by the time I got to the middle of Bronco Lane, I was doing 40 miles an hour, and speeds 25. So I think if, we did this on Ellis Lane, I think, some time ago, because we have the same situation here, people, by the time they get down, they're speeding up. Let's try that. Also, give the discretion to Road and Bridge, if this comes up somewhere else, get with that commissioner, or that commissioner get with you, and see if we need to do that on another county road. Because I really wanna try to do this, you can, you can do hard law enforcement, but this is something we can do to try to explain to the people that there's a safety hazard there, and do it without getting law enforcement involved. There's something about stopping people when they're in a hurry going somewhere that's, it's just not how, sometimes it's necessary, but it's not. So any other discussion to be had? So I think the board is saying, go ahead and order, get those 25 miles, because I think you've already checked with the vendor, and they can add the red border, is that correct?
They have to make a whole new sign.
Is that correct?
It's gonna be a larger, because the speed limit sign has to remain the same.
Right.
Then they have to have the minimum speed three, and you're telling them to sign larger.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a bigger sign.
Easier to see. So we can get those done.
Do you have additional cost on that?
Yes, there is. Probably could need a new sign.
You're gonna be ordering one, two, three, four, five, six, eight of them right away, right?
Do you have an idea how much they are, or?
Fifty-five dollars?
Fifty-five dollars, please? And they were previously?
Thirty-six.
You need to add that dollar figure to your motion? Or that comes out of their budget?
It comes out of their budget.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of us close, same sign. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 13, set public hearing date for sentencing Texas transportation bill chapter 253 entitled County Improvement Subdivision Roads Vernon 2003. To consider reduction in speed limit and placement of 30 mile, replacement of 30 mile an hour per hour sign, limit sign to 25 mile per hour speed limit sign on White Lane in Bevo, Texas. When is the time, what is the date we've been setting? Is it the next quarter that we have to advertise?
Thirty days, it's gotta get advertised in thirty days.
I know it's 30 days.
Yes, 30 days to advertise.
But we don't have court till the 25th.
So the date will be 10 a.m. August 25th?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Do I have a motion to set the public hearing date for August 25th at 10 a.m.? Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Number 14, approved grant agreement between the Ed Rochelle Foundation and B County for the District Attorney's Office. Do we have someone here from District Attorney's Office? Guide us through this. What are we gonna be buying with this grant?
Good morning, Veronica Saldana from the District Attorney's Office. We got approved for the Ed Rochelle Foundation grant, and so we're just about to sign our signature today. And we got $15,000. It will be helping us furnish our newly renovated office. We need a conference table for sure, and conference tables aren't cheap. So that's what we're gonna be using the money for, just for sure, a conference room table with the chairs, and then to help furnish any of the office's new desks, because the desks that have been in there have been there for, you know, ten, 15 years, so it's about time. So that's what the money will be.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? We have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Vernon, we appreciate it. Number 15, approved Sheriff's Office emergency budget amendment for the B County Law Enforcement Centers unforeseen generator expenses. Do we have a motion? This is something we have to do.
Okay, so what I have to say about this is that we don't have an amount, and so I feel like this is a little preliminary. So if we can table this until we get more information, I know the Sheriff's Office is still actively working with our repair vendor, and we aren't any
We don't have a final plan yet, man.
Okay, so.
So we don't have a final?
No, and I'd like to
I'll draw my motion, and I'll make a motion that we table this until the next court date. I'll be on my second, and I'll second your motion.
Do we have a motion to table? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you. Thank you for bringing up to our attention. We're gonna get to our mission.
For the next, the next one. But see, and then if we don't, still don't have it, we'll table it again, so for the next meeting.
Number 16, approved resolution authorizing submission of Operation Lone Star fiscal year 2026 grant application number 55101 to the State of Texas Office of the Government. Chief Deputy, do you have something you'd like to tell us about this, sir?
Basically, Commissioners, Russell Carr, Chief Deputy of the B County Sheriff's Office, Commissioners, we submitted an application for Operation Lone Star this year. We submitted application for around $790,000. Basically, the state has come back to offer us a $100,000 grant, so they've kinda cut our grant application a little bit, well, quite a lot, actually. But if, the motion here, or the proposal here is just to authorize us to go forward with that, with that grant application. That grant application right now is for $100,000 in personnel. Where we are right now, we're gonna try to maybe contact them and see if we can split some of that up into equipment, or if they, if they'll only let us leave it in personnel. That's where we are with it right now.
We going back up to where we were before, or?
Probably not. The way they award the grant system is kind of based on a point system, if you will. It's all about participation, and from what I understand, the B County Sheriff's Office did not participate in Operation Lone Star last year, so we do miss a lot of points. We basically have to start over at this point. That's, that's the preliminary explanations we got for that reduction in the, in the application, but it kinda makes sense when, you know, when I compare it to other things that I've heard and investigated about it.
Thank you. Move to approve. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Chief Deputy, appreciate it, sir.
Yes.
Number 17, approved resolution acknowledging terms and conditions of reimbursement for Help America Vote Act Haba Fund. This one is Bureau, Bureau, Bureau.
This is the Haba grant. Good morning, Laura Warren, Exeter Central. This is the Haba grant that I brought to y'all last, Commissioner, to court, and this is just the resolution that has to be signed by the court in order to send it in. We want to get our application, everything's been planned on that, but I do have to have the resolution to send it in.
Do we have that resolution?
You're supposed to, it was attached.
We'll get, we'll get signed.
We'll get signed.
That's all it was. This, this was the reimbursement, it was gonna be around $24,000. Give you an exact amount. Give me a second.
Do we have a motion?
Question, approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Okay, okay. Oh, you have the resolution?
I have it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let us sign that right now.
I think it's just what was in the thing. It's not actual, I think Candy was gonna put it on the letter pad.
Well, we can sign this and have this just
Does it have an amount on it? Yes, our reimbursement amount. The federal share was, our federal share was $42,500 is what we were available for, which would have required a match of $8,500, and we requested $40,814.75. And our matching funds for that was gonna be $8,162.95. We had already purchased $38,314.75 in equipment and items that we needed. Our 20% match for that was $6,062.95, which was gonna give us back $24,251.80. That's what we've already spent. And then we just submitted for our toy head and finished out our battery replacement for an additional $10,500, our $2,100 match to give us another $8,400. So the total, total that we would get beginning in this would be $32,651.80. That was on that little chart I gave y'all last, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
We have to sign the resolution. We don't have the, we don't have the fancy paper, but we do have one to sign.
I don't think it matters to them, but I know that Candy said that she
Before you leave, let us give you the reason.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Warren.
You're welcome, sir.
Number 18, presentation of award recognizing Kathy Ball as recipient of the statewide 2025 Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service Superior Service Award for her administrative support presented by Randy Shower, AgriLife Extension Agent.
Yes, hello again, gentlemen. So this year, Kathy has been, she did, she was nominated for a Superior Service Award, and she is mid-career, so has anywhere from nine to 18 years there. It is open to the statewide, and only one winner per that award. And this is kind of a little rundown, and so these awards are the highest honor conferred by the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service to faculty, agents, and staff who have excelled in their job performance. To be nominated, recommended, and selected for this special award, it is a process involving your coworkers, your peers on the Extension Honor Awards Committee and Extension Administration. It is a high praise indeed for our outstanding accomplishments. So Ms. Kathy has been with us for how long?
15, 16.
15, 16 years, and we, Mr. David Liao, who was the old HST agent who was stationed here, went with, called me the other, I guess, back in January, and said, hey, I wanna nominate her, she deserves it. And when I tell you it is a lengthy process, it is a hundred-point system, you need two letters of recommendation, and they want dollar figures down to how much money she handles, how many people she talks to on a weekly basis. It is a very, very, very lengthy, lengthy process, but we got it done. And yeah, so she won it, and I just wanna give her a round of applause. She keeps our office afloat, she's amazing, definitely keeps one and an eye in line. And we get to go to the Capitol, and she gets her award presented to her on July 25th. So we will be in Austin on July 25th, and yeah, we get to feel
Well, we have to have a photo opportunity.
Well, it's a pretty big deal.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, ma'am. Good job. Y'all, hold them all up. I'm gonna go camera.
Yes.
One, two, three. I'm gonna zoom it just a little. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, good job. I think you're up next again.
I am. Heard me a lot today.
You're gonna watch some overtime this year. Number 19.
Yes, number 19, our cattleman's roundup is coming up on this Friday.
I need your reason.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Presentation and invitation to the 2025 South Texas Cattleman's Roundup on Friday, February 18, 2025 at 10 o'clock a.m., presented by Randy Shower, AgriLife Extension Agent.
Okay, so a little rundown on our cattleman's roundup. We have participated in this for a very long time. Mr. and Ms. Butler out at the Bevo Livestock Mission, they so graciously, but assisted there. We raise money for the Texas Children, I mean, the Driscoll Children's Hospital, and we get silent auction items from people around the community, anywhere from baked goods to, this year, I think we have a fishing trip. Anything, I'm gonna bake some bread, so if you, if you have something that you'd like to donate, we normally get people from the Connecticut donate, and then our kids, our 4-H kids from Goliath and Karnes and B County all come together, and they walk them through the ring before the, the cow sell starts. And it's a great opportunity. We have a lot of people come and support it. We raise a lot of money for the children and for the hospital, and you can get some really cool stuff. So if y'all are available, Friday, 10 a.m. is when we're gonna kick off. Our kids will be walking things through the arena, and then they'll start the, their sale. So we hope to see y'all there.
And if people have donations, they can take them by the extension office?
Take it by the extension office, you can call us, yeah, any of those things, whatever you have, so we'll take you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Y'all are very, very busy down there.
We are very. Summer is not a relaxing time for us.
We'll go about real quick, Dennis.
Yes.
Number 20, Hurricane Harvey Texas Land Office, GLO Community Development Grant, CDBG
Pettis and also for Tynan. They got new water well and a lot of improvements for their meters and fire hydrants and things like that. It also does County Road 631 to New Bridge and Silver Creek for the people in Catalode. So these four projects total at the $4.7 million that, that are gonna be improvements for Bee County that are funded by grants. And we depend so much on grants. Everybody, the sheriff's office and, you know, D A, everybody. So this is a very big addition. It's taken this long to get it to this point. So we're looking forward to the kickoff here. We're there.[1584.04]